Call this meeting to order?
Uh, call this meeting to order. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here, but not for long.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Here.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Oh, okay. Uh, Ty, I've asked Ty if he'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Taylor. Young man, would you mind leading us in a quick prayer? Can, can you do that? Come on up to the podium, if you don't mind. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just... Hey, just say something quick, short and sweet, man, just...
I want to pause and give you thanks for this day and for sparing us in this recent storm that went by. Our hearts go out to people who were affected and let this council go as, meeting go as smooth as we can. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Taylor. Thank you. Okay, all right. Uh, so, any deletions or additions? Anybody have anything? No? Okay. All right, public comment. Marnie, do we have anybody signed up for general public comment?
We do. Van Cadenhead, Don Horton, and Sue Miller.
Okay.
Sue Miller, Lower Matto Cumbey. In recent years, many people in Alamo Rata have worried about the direction of our community. Many believe we need change. It is an engaged and informed community that leads to change, starting with the November elections. Too often, we listen to campaign promises and are fooled. Fooled. We look at our ballots and perhaps vote for the most familiar name without thinking about why the name was familiar. Or we vote in alphabetical order, or we don't know enough and just leave the village council portion of the ballot blank. If we're going to get real change, we need to elect honest, compassionate candidates with integrity, who care about all the people. Candidates that study and understand the village issues and concerns, those that engage the community, listen to them, and vote regularly, remembering what will best help Alamo Rata's long-term vision with no personal agendas. Tonight, we will lose three valued members of the council. They have spent endless amount of personal time to study the lengthy agendas, ask questions, listen, and vote accordingly. Sometimes, I wasn't happy with the way they voted on issues that are near and dear to me, but I am so very sorry to see them step down. They worked diligently for our community. They worked to make Alamo Rata better. Often, surely stressed, surely they were stressed frustrated with the lack of progress. They tried their best to fix what is broken. Our community will miss their experience, wisdom, and contributions to our local government efforts. I hope we will see them continue to work with future councils to help make our community better and to facilitate the mission they began when elected. Thank you, Henry, Elizabeth, and Mark.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Van Cadenhead. I'd like to reiterate what Mrs. Miller just said about the three of you who are departing. We spent a lot of time in this room together in trying to fix the things that are wrong with Alamo Rata. And we didn't always agree, but we always had the, the North Star of the sport fishing capital of the world ahead of us. And we were trying to fix that. And along that line, I would just like to suggest that rather than, than putting consent agenda items that involve more than $25,000 worth of taxpayers' money on the agenda not to be discussed, I would like them to be able to be discussed if they were more than $25,000. Because we've had numerous items that were put on the consent agenda that were big-ticket items that were very important that, uh, just at, at the last meeting, the FDOT presentation, we had to fight to have public comment. And it was, it was obviously a very important local issue that we had two members of FDOT on the Zoom that could hear, you know, they, they said, oh, we want so much public input. And then we were denied to have public input. Well, we finally got it, and I, I thank you for that, for giving us a consensus to speak. And I have gotten a lot of feedback from what was said about the FDOT. And, and it wouldn't have been said unless we'd had public, unless we had that public comment. So, uh, public comment is very important. And also, it's, it's very important to include the public in decisions, the, of items on the consent agenda that are above $25,000. I mean, you've had hundreds of thousands of dollars on an agenda item and just put it on the, the consent agenda. That doesn't wash. That's not good. We need to have discussion. We need to be able to have discussion. We need to have, you know, be able to pull it, and not just a council member pull it, but have a member of the audience that wants to discuss it pull it. So, uh, I hope you'll take that into consideration, and thank you very much. And, uh, I'm waiting eagerly to see the next council. Bye-bye.
Next.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Don Horton, and I just want to thank the council that's sitting here tonight in your last council meeting. I want to thank Sue for the kind comments about people that are running for election and hope people pay attention to what she said because she actually described me as a T. And I hope that, uh, and, and I, uh, and I certainly hope that you guys are proud of the, some of the decisions you made and, and I'm thankful for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, anybody else? Marnie?
Yes, we have Mr. Wishmeyer on Zoom. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wishmeyer. You've got three minutes.
Very much. Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Again, I would like to reiterate the comments of Sue Miller and thanking the council members for putting their time and due diligence into decisions that they made. Like I said on Tuesday, even though we may not have agreed on all the decisions, I appreciate the time and effort that was put into it. I certainly hope and look forward to the next council that will do more public comment because of the fact that I also know what Van said. And we've had a lot of trouble trying to get public comment. We've had some issues that come up in millions of dollars, not just thousands, but millions of dollars on the consent agenda. So I certainly hope we get a chance to deal with that. And the last thing is, look at the most recent hurricanes that we've had and how quickly they escalated. Can you imagine evacuation from the Keys, from Key West all the way to at least Homestead? Then who knows where we go from there? So I hope you consider that when you're talking about the Rogo permits that you're going to discuss later on this evening. So, please consider everything, and safety is our number one concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed. All right, council, we are going to move on to mayor council communications. Anybody have anything? No? Okay. All right. Village attorney, village manager communications? Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank our first responder team and the balance of our staff, public works, and administrative personnel who helped monitor the progress for Hurricane Milton and make sure that our community was prepared to respond. We are blessed that it was only a glancing impact to Alamo Rata. And our hearts and prayers go with those further north that were more severely impacted. But again, most importantly, I want to thank our staff for their efforts through this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard about a mobile home park for elders that some tornadoes went through. Or maybe, did you, did you tell me that this morning in Port St. Lucie?
Yes, sir, I did.
That's what I thought. Okay. John, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I just, I echo what, what Rob said and, you know, thank the first responders. Obviously, our, our thoughts and prayers are with our brothers and sisters up in the northern part and the central part of the state. Um, and, you know, we, we were lucky down here and, you know, our, you know, if they, if they need anything, obviously, you know, they, they know how, and they know who to call and who to reach out to. Um, and just as a matter of personal privilege, I wanted to thank you all. I know that we have three council members who, this will be their last meeting or the last regularly scheduled meeting. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to get a chance to work with you. Uh, it has truly been a pleasure to, to work with this council, and I look forward to continuing this meeting.
Thank you, John. All right, so let's move on then to resolutions. Uh, so, John, A, tab A?
Tab A is a resolution of the village council of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, approving an agreement pursuant to RFP 24-10 for the comprehensive plan update. Authorizes village manager to execute the agreement, authorizes the village manager to expend budget funds, and providing for an effective date.
Jennifer?
Thank you.
We can do public comment first, whatever you would prefer.
It's the council's pleasure. If you want me to just do a brief description, or if you want to have public comment, it's up to you.
Okay, let's do public comment. Is that all right with everybody? We do public comment now?
Maybe we should discuss it so they know what they're commenting on.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
That's good.
You're good? Okay, all right. So, Jennifer, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, thank you, council. This is a follow-up to the decision you made in September regarding approving Able City East as the vendor for our comprehensive plan update. This is the award of the agreement with Able City East to do that work for us. Uh, the proposed cost for the project is $112,000. This cost would include the, uh, update to the comprehensive plan as well as land development regulations. The project costs would be coming out of the Planning Development Services Department professional service expenditures, which come from the general fund and is revenue from the ad valorem property taxes. This project has been budgeted for 2024, 25 in that budget. At this time, I can go through all of the previous discussion we've had about these proposals, but I think we've exhausted those. So, I don't think we have to do that, but I'm happy to have, answer any other questions you have about Able, Able City East and the project itself. But at this time, we would recommend that you adopt the resolution and allow the manager to sign the form of agreement.
Thank you, Jennifer. Council, anybody have any questions for Jennifer? No? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open public comment then, Marnie.
Okay, we have Van Cadenhead, Ty Harris, and Don Horton.
Good evening again. I'm Van Cadenhead. Um, I would urge you to sign this contract. I really like these people, and I think you like these people. And they seem to have some really good ideas for Alamo Rata. We need a, uh, sea change in what's going on here. This needs to be a pivotal comprehensive plan revamp. And the LDRs, uh, anything, we don't need to scrap the whole thing. You don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. We've got a lot of good stuff in the comp plan and the LDRs. The, but things need to be tweaked after such a long time. And we have a different situation than we had when we were incorporated. So, uh, I welcome some fresh eyes and some fresh brains and, and some different experiences to come in here and, and make this better for Alamo Rata. Because what we're doing, uh, when you sign that contract, years. So, uh, I think we've, we've chosen some good people to do it. I urge you to, uh, let Mr. Cole sign the contract. And thank you very much for coming to this decision and this company because, uh, I look forward to seeing what they can do with Alamo Rata. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, Marnie.
I was mistaken. Ty doesn't want to speak at this time, so next up is Don Horton, and then Mr. Wishmeyer is on Zoom.
Again, Don Horton, 47 Schooner Bay Road. Uh, the, all of the decisions that y'all have made through the, the entire two-year process, and I know that I've talked to at least four of you about this decision you're going to make tonight. And I'm so thankful that you picked the right company. And, uh, and I am very thankful that we're moving on with a new comprehensive plan, land development regulations, a strategic plan. Those are all something that we absolutely must have in an update on our comp plan. And I believe this company is going to bring good, innovative, fresh ideas. I'm very hopeful for a lot of public input and some good things that can come to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Marnie? Mr. Wishmeyer?
Yep, Mr. Wishmeyer. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wishmeyer. You've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. This is just another example of trying to do public comment before we hear anything that the council has to say. So therefore, some of our remarks cannot be related to what is actually going on. I do recommend that you pass this because Able East is a very good company. And I hope that you pass this resolution. And I hope in the future that you will please do some discussion before we do public comment so we are more well-informed on what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, we have anybody else?
We do not.
No? Okay. Sue, you didn't want to speak on that? Okay, all right. All right, public comment is now closed. Uh, council, do I, we have any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I have discussion.
Okay.
I, I looked through the contract, and I didn't see anything that was binding as to what they were going to do. There was no specific time limit on anything as to what they were going to do. For example, the LDRs is kind of an add-on. It should have been in the contract. Uh, and you're looking to upzone. You know, everybody that came forward with a proposal, I could work with anybody. But the fact is, because I pay attention as to what triggers your emotions and your yes votes and your no votes, and the one thing, and I said it at the meeting, the one thing that you all shared, I mean, everybody, was the fact that the company that you chose showed a great degree of enthusiasm as being part of this Alamo Rata. The enthusiasm was, was shared by everybody. But there was no content to be shared. It was just the enthusiasm. So, I guess I'm going to tell you in the future, there is no future except for the mayor and, and the vice mayor. But the content is very important besides the theatrics of the proposal. So, therefore, I mean, I'm not going to be here to work with them, but your decision should not be based on their enthusiasm as being part of Alamo Rata. I just have to say it. I said it before, I said it again. I assume that the $112,000 will be appropriately in the budget. But there are some things that should be in this proposal, not in the proposal in the contract, that says we're going to do this, that, and the other. I couldn't find anything like that. So, maybe, Mr. Mayor, you should take another look as to the contract. And, uh, it would make me happy if you did. I'm not suggesting you do it right away, but I think there's some things that should be included in the contract.
You meant to say manager. You said mayor.
Oh, did I say mayor?
Yeah.
He was looking at me, though, so I, I gathered he was speaking to me.
I'm sorry. Anyway, that's, that's my observation. I just have to make that, just have to say what's on my mind, so thank you. And I'm sorry I misspoke.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Yeah, um, Henry, I don't know if you were looking at the online version of this because I had a similar question. The contract references Exhibit A and Exhibit B, but there was no Exhibit A and B. Um, I think it was a, and please, if you can, Mr. Cole, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I think it was a clerical, or I don't want to say a clerical, whatever, an error in the way we were labeling, labeling this. So Exhibit A is actually, um, now reflecting in the online version where Exhibit A is the proposal that they submitted. Exhibit B is that timeline that they submitted. So it's labeled appropriate, and presumably, the contract is referencing those two exhibits that are now labeled in our online document, documentation. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I, I think that, that your question was appropriate. I had the same one, but I think it was corrected.
Okay.
Okay, any further comment? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Well, Henry, I liked him. I liked him from the get-go. Whether he was enthusiastic or not, I liked him. And I think I'm a pretty good read of people as well, and I think we picked the right company. So I move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right. Marnie, we have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
I'll say no, just to back up what I, what I said. That's all, really.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Yeah, the motion passes four to one.
Okay, we're on to tab B.
Tab B is a resolution of the village council of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, providing a recommendation to the Monroe County Board of County Commissioners regarding the number of additional residential building permit allocations the village would like to receive in potential future allocations, providing for transmission of this resolution to certain people within the county.
Jennifer?
Good evening. How is everyone today?
Great.
Great. So, um, we are going to talk about future V-PAS allocations. Um, as you may remember, we, back- As you may remember, we, back in April, we presented a timeline of this process to the council, and it was to culminate at this meeting with a presentation and a recommendation. So I'm going to go through a small PowerPoint to show you sort of some of the general background and how we got here, why we're doing what we're doing, and then culminate in our recommendation, and then we can have a question-and-answer discussion kind of thing, if you prefer. So I gave everyone at the council a handout of the PowerPoint, so you have that in front of you as well. So, moving forward. So the first question, what is B-PASS? Because I'm sure we use that term a lot, but some people don't know what it is, and I heard throughout the summer when we were doing the community engagement that we were using terms that weren't understandable to people and stuff, so I wanted to make sure it was clear to everybody what we were talking about. B-PASS is our building permit allocation system. It's defined in Division 30-4-11 of the Village Code. It is the way we issue building permits for all new construction in the village, because we are in an area of critical state concern. All building permits that come into the village are scored and based on criteria that are in our land development regulations, and then based on those scores, all the permits are ranked and placed on what we call the B-PASS list. Every quarter, we publish that list, and then based on that list, when we have allocations available quarterly, the council will issue permits based on the score on that list. The higher the score, the more likely you are to get a permit. So that's what B-PASS basically is. In 2002, the village adopted a B-PASS ordinance with an original number of 302 allocations, and in 2012, the Department of Economic Opportunity, which is now the Department of Commerce, completed a hurricane evacuation clearance modeling, and to maintain a 24-hour evacuation time, Isla Morada received an additional 263 allocations for a total of 565 allocations. And then in 2017, the village entered into a 380 agreement with DEO Monroe County, the cities of Key West, Leighton, and Marathon, in which the village received an additional 10.25 allocations. Now, that agreement was basically Key West wanted to develop an affordable housing project outside their city limits in unincorporated Monroe, and because of that, they had to get permission from all the other jurisdictions, and the agreement included giving the other jurisdictions additional units. So that's where those 10.25 came from in 2017, in case there were some questions about where those came from. What is our current B-PASS situation? So currently, we have three market rate available. We have 10 affordable available. However, eight of those were reserved by this council for village use. We have 292 early evacuation affordable available, and 165 of those were reserved by this council for village use. We have 23 administrative relief available, and we have 54 permits in the queue or on the B-PASS list currently. And this year, the council approved a temporary moratorium on market rate B-PASS applications, which is set to expire on February 6, 2025. Now, you had it for six months. You extended it for the additional six months, so that is the utmost date that it will expire, is February 6, 2025. The Village Council has also approved a temporary moratorium on administrative relief applications. Currently, that is with the Department of Commerce for their review. They have not got back to us yet on their approval on that. We're expected to hear from them no later than October 18. So currently, if someone were to apply for administrative relief, we would accept that application, because the moratorium is not in place until the Department of Commerce approves it. But once they approve it, that will go into place for six months. All right. The 2023, last fall, the Department of Commerce, formerly DEO, and the Division of Emergency Management updated the hurricane evacuation modeling that they did back in 2012, and they based it on the new 2020 census data and other relevant data. So this chart here came from that report that they did last fall in 2023. And then earlier this year, the state legislature agreed to include Key West in the modeling, and that mobile homes should be included in Phase 1. So if you're looking at the chart, this column right here, where it says Florida Keys including Key West and mobile homes in Phase 1, so it's with the numbers, it's the second column over, that's the one that we would be looking at, because that's the one that the legislature adopted for us or agreed to for us. So those are the numbers that we're looking at for hurricane evacuation. Why are we having this discussion, and what have we done to prepare for this discussion So there's, as you may know, there's an ongoing countywide ROGO B-PASS discussion. Back in the early part of the year, when, after the hurricane modeling was updated, there was a group of, the managers got together, and some people, not me, decided that the discussion was going to be led by Monroe County. And so back in March, Monroe County kicked off their part of the process. They had a meeting in March in their Key Largo building. I was attended by myself. I was attended by Mr. Cole. I believe that was one of his first weeks here, if not his first week here, that he attended as well. And, you know, we heard a lot of good information from them at that point, but at that time, we decided that we wanted to have Isla Morada inform the county about our decision or our wants and needs while they're making their decision for the county-wide decision. So the BOCC will make its decision at its December meeting, and again, we wanted to inform the BOCC before a decision is made of preference regarding allocations. So what were the questions we wanted to answer? Do we want more allocations? That was the first one. If yes, how many? And what kind? Market rate, affordable, or both? And what considerations were we looking at? We looked at infrastructure. We looked at environmental considerations. We looked at traffic, and we looked at potential takings liabilities. So those are some of the considerations that we included. What has been the village process to date? So first, early on, the planning staff undertook a vacant parcel analysis. The initial analysis shows 178 vacant residential parcels. And just to sort of talk about that a little bit more, the following criteria was used in the vacant parcel analysis. All the lots in that analysis are residentially zoned. They meet a minimum square footage size for residential lot development, and they're considered vacant according to Monroe County Property Appraiser as of 2022. Now, there is some additional scrubbing that needs to be done on those lots. Some may have other beneficial use that we haven't looked at. Some may be budding, joining property that is owned by the same owner that could be, you know, unified to avoid takings claims, so we haven't dug that deep into those lots. So right now, we're looking at the number of 178 vacant parcels as the number of, the highest number. It could be less, but that's our highest number at the moment. We also held two workshops over the summer. One on July 30th, that was attended by 24 people, and one on August 28th, that was attended by 26 people. The one on July 30th was a general overview of B-PASS and sort of a general discussion of what we're looking to do and what were people's general thoughts. The one on August 28th was a little bit more specific. We included presentations by Wy Serota, somebody really great from John's firm on takings. And then we had an infrastructure presentation by our review engineer, Robert Mather, and an environmental presentation by our biologist, Daniel Parabok, as well. And that was attended, again, by 26 people. We created two surveys for village residents. Each survey had just under 400 participants or respondents. The first survey was more demographic, and to get a feel for the kind of people that would be answering the survey. And then the second survey had more specific questions about B-PASS and asking people their preferences and thoughts. And finally, we received 11 emails from residents with comments and questions, or not questions, but comments about the process and whether or not they felt more allocations would be a good thing or not.
Jennifer, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
How many people were emailed that this was going on?
So we, every time we did something, we posted it on all of our socials. Rob would put it in his weekly manager newsletter, would go on the website. The Chamber put out blast for us. I attended a Chamber meeting and made a sort of a mini presentation announcement to them there. So we tried to get it out to as many places as we could. So just a little bit on the survey feedback, community feedback from the survey. 63.3% of survey takers voted in favor of some allocations, and 66.9% would rather use additional B-PASS allocations for takings liabilities over the alternative use of tax increase. Majority of survey takers supported a mixture of market rate, affordable, and workforce housing, and obviously, the top two concerns were traffic and the environment, which was not surprising at all. And then in the 11 emails that we received, eight residents emailed stating they wanted no more development at all. One specifically asked the village to secure additional allocations. One asked for a balanced consideration, and one considered, asked that we consider all So, moving on to staff recommendation. When we looked at all of the information and we took into consideration the presentations done by Wy Serota on takings liabilities and on the infrastructure and the ability of our infrastructure to handle additional allocations and the environment and the current environmental regulations we have that protect the environment, it's staff's recommendation that we would recommend that the council request an additional 250 allocations for Isla Morada. These 250 allocations would cover the 54 on the B-PASS list currently, plus 178 from the vacant parcel analysis. And if you do math quickly in your head, I know that's a little bit less than 250, but that gives us an extra 18, I believe it was, as a cushion. All of these numbers are done by humans, people in my office, and we're not infallible, and we make mistakes, and some of these calculations could be off by one or two, so we just wanted a little bit of a cushion to make sure that we covered ourselves in all of our bases. I know that some people will say that it's too many, we shouldn't have any. I just want people to understand that, you know, this is what we're looking at for Isla Morada. The county is still looking at their number and what they're going to ask for county-wide. So if we say we want zero in Isla Morada, that doesn't mean the county's going to say they want zero county-wide, and they're going to give them to Key Largo, they're going to give them to Marathon, and the impacts may still impact Isla Morada. The traffic's still going to come through Isla Morada, and the environment is still going to be impacted. If we get a portion of those, we can mitigate what we can mitigate in our community, and we will get the benefit of some taxes in the community as well. So we tried to balance as best we could, and that's the recommendation that we would go with. So having said that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Let's open public comment, Marnie.
Okay. We have Ty Harris, Van Cadenhead, Sue Miller, Susan Raffanella. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. Ty Harris, 110 Plantation Shores Boulevard. I attended both of those B-PASS workshops, and if you think that not taking 250 is going to increase or make our traffic better in the future, you're wrong, because what's going to happen is the county's just going to take those 250 and put some to the south of you and some to the north. It's not going to be a loss of 250 into the county. It's just going to be 250 distributed in the county, just not in Isla Morada, which then leaves you with a horrible takings problem. You heard the numbers. You've got 54 in B-PASS right now that have you dead to rights because you approved these for a building. They've got building permits pending. Then you've got another 178 out there floating around that may or may not, at different times, come in and ask for a permit, and then when they're denied, then we'll be looking at another takings claim. Having those in your back pocket gives you the flexibility to address those situations as they come up. And remember, these units don't come allocated a certain way. They're building rights. They're not like the 300 early outs. You can put some of these to workforce, you can put them to affordable, you can use them any way you want. You guys are the ones that decide that. So it's the ultimate guarantee that you have flexibility to address problems in the future, and you can slow growth these things out. There's nothing that requires you to give out 20 a year. Give 10 a year. Whatever that number is that you feel prevents that event horizon of hitting the takings, you know, wall, that's what you're trying to avoid. And that's what, as a taxpayer, I would urge you to avoid, because I really don't want to pay any more in taxes than I'm already paying. Thank you very much.
Next, Marnie.
Next is Van Cadenhead.
I attended those two meetings along with Mr. Harris, and we watched an FDOT presentation about the Isla Morada bottleneck, and they didn't want to discuss anything above Isla Morada or below Isla Morada. They didn't want to discuss Isla Morada at all. And I think that we are overbuilt at this particular point, and the most I would go is if we have 54 people in the queue, we could ask for 55 permits. But the 178 are, the planning director said was the high number, and the Wy Serota takings expert that was at those meetings that Mr. Harris and I attended and we all attended, said that 99% of the appeals of the takings cases never made it to court, because they were just too cumbersome and expensive, and the people lost the appeals. So I think that's a scare number. That's a scare tactic. Those 178, there's not 178 people going to be suing Isla Morada because they didn't get to build. A lot of those are going to be disqualified because they bought after they should have known they didn't exercise due diligence, or they did exercise due diligence and decided they'd gouge Isla Morada because they would have a permit or they would have something in the queue that could be used in a lawsuit. Now, we don't need, if you can look at the traffic that we've got, if you can look at the intensity and the density of the population of Isla Morada and say that we need, we're saying 250 more, but we've got more in the bank, so it's over 500 that we could conceivably have to build. And we do not need that many more market rate, affordable, administrative relief, anything in Isla Morada. Whatever we have that we have already set aside in administrative relief for the early outs, they can be used as a legal satisfaction of anyone with any kind of a takings claim or a complaint. But as far as being sued by 178 people, that's just scare numbers. That's not going to happen. And the lady from Wy Serota said that. She said 99% of the people that appealed a takings claim failed. It did not happen. So I think that we should not behave like we're mentally deficient and add 250 more people into this pot that's stirring, and if we have 55 that are already committed and have permits, perhaps we should accept 55. Thank you very much.
Next.
Next up is Sue Miller.
I think all of our thoughts are with the people throughout Florida who just went through a major evacuation process to get out of harm's way. Perhaps the people of Isla Morada that are asking for 250 more B-PASS allocations have been sleeping the last month as we struggle to protect our homes and families from disastrous hurricanes. Have we slept through the workshops on vulnerability and sea level rise? I just find it very difficult to believe that we still think that we should grow more in Isla Morada. Since 2002, according to the statistics provided, we had a total of 575 allocations given to us by the state since, from 2002 to 2022. since, from 2002 to 2023, ignoring the 300 affordable, which are additional. We're now asking with the affordable and all the ones that we currently still have, we're saying we need another 580 with what was in the plan that she presented, plus 250. My math says that's 580 that aren't under construction yet, when originally, in 2002, we said we'd reach buildout at 575. And now we want another, to build another 580 units. We have critical life and safety issues unfolding before our eyes in Florida. We have rapid intensification of storms. The storms used to come off of Africa, now they're coming from the Caribbean, coming up, coming here in just a matter of days. We might not have 48 hours to send our affordable housing people, the people that would normally be putting up the shutters. And we send them out and have to put up the shutters ourselves. It's just amazing to me. We have watched over the last 20 years as our fragile environment has declined dramatically. The traffic became intolerable. The pipeline burst as 25 million gallons of potable water was just too much for our rusty old pipes and it will take us years to fix that. It's just amazing that we're here today to discuss 250 as a recommendation. Thank you.
Next up is Susan Raffanello.
Good evening, Susan Raffanello. I'm also here a little bit chagrined at a couple of things that, with respect to this analysis. I agree with Sue Miller that 250 is an astronomical ask. That plus those that are currently in our allocation system and remain are more than half again what the overall buildout was expected to be. All of this seems to be driven by what for years I have said is the great takings myth. Everybody in Isla Marata has been conditioned for decades of, I dare to use the word misinformation, with respect to the potential liability for the takings myth. The council communication is asking for 100% plus those on B-Pass, plus a cushion, plus those that already exist, just in case, and using the backbone of the potential takings as a justification for it. But let's take a look at the 178. There was contained in the tabs, not referenced today, additional staff information about the vacant parcel analysis. And if you look at the 178 and accept what the staff has indicated as true, you really winnow that down to six, maybe six possible takings. But what's more, this analysis is flawed from the get-go. And why do I say that? Because it does not analyze when these individual owners or families, and we're not counting, did a last free market arms-length transaction on this property. If it was bought after 1992 for the Rogo allocations in Monroe, or even being generous, 2002, when the B-Pass system came into place in Isla Marata, it is not an economically backed expectation for these owners to be able to build. Period, end of story, there is no takings liability. And business cannot run out of fear of litigation. I'm a litigator, I wish it did. But that's not how business is supposed to work. Business runs litigation, not vice versa, and for decades it seems. And now the rubber meets the road, we've been conditioned that it should be the worst. What is also astonishing to me are the numbers in the survey that get buried. The question, if the state were to allocate additional B-Pass, in your opinion, how many should Isla Marata accept? Nearly 37%, 37% said none. They said that believing, based upon the survey, that there were 220 potential liabilities for takings out there, 220. Even with 220 potential liability takings out there, 33% said, we'd rather pay out of our taxes, don't take more allocations. We now know that it's a handful at most. Wyserota is correct, they do not succeed. Why? Because there's no economically backed expectation for the vast majority of those. We've asked for that analysis to be done, I have for the last couple of years. That analysis needs to be done before an informed decision can be made. And for that reason, I think you need to really take a hard look at the number that you request, if any. Thank you.
Anybody else, Marnie?
Yep, next up is Don.
Thank you, Don Horton, 47 Schooner Bay Road. You know, when this topic first came up, I think, excuse me, I think I was one of the first ones to come to this podium and ask that you take them. Take them, take them all. I'm not saying you've got to use them all, but certainly we can fix the list that we have that are hanging in there, that are in limbo right now. And these folks that in good faith spent a lot of money, a lot of time, and have gone through the process and are sitting in that B-Pass queue. As Ty said, we don't have to allocate them at 20 a year or 10 a year. But if we don't take them, the county is going to take them and they are going to go on and be built somewhere else. If you saw the traffic last week or a week before, when we don't have all of the tourists down here and they're all going to Marathon and points south of Marathon, when Marathon has 2,499 more transient uses than we have, it's very obvious that they're driving through there. Our local, our local traffic is not as bad because they're not going down there right now. So if we look at the future and we start thinking about some inner-city transportation and we move our people around and we get them off of the highway, we're doing good for our community. We can build more resilient homes, we can build more energy-efficient homes, we can take care of these takings claims. And if you don't think the takings claims actually happen, I just recall not long ago, somebody settling on the six lots for Sojourn. And that settlement was done because they filed a takings claim. And perhaps maybe these things, when they say these statements of, and I'm not an attorney, but when these things don't go to court, maybe it's because they realize that they're going to lose in court. The government realizes they're going to lose in court, and so they settle. And those settlements happen and we don't even know about them. And nobody in this town probably knows that Sojourn got their six lots from a lawsuit that happened many, many years ago. And the result of that was six lots, because they filed a takings claim on that. I recall a big lawsuit on the Bay Harbor community when Mr. Mameli wasn't going to be able to build his condos down in Lower Matacombe. That went on for years and years and years when it was called Captain's Cove. And what came out of that was Bay Harbor. So I don't think that people that are standing up here and telling you that takings don't happen, I've watched them happen in the Keys for quite some time. So anyway, take these, I'm not saying use them all, but take them so that we've got them and don't lose takings claims, thanks so much.
Thank you, anybody else, Marnie?
Yes, we have Mr. Wishmeyer on Zoom. Okay, Mr. Wishmeyer, you've got three minutes.
Thank you very much, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. First of all, you ought to consider why we've already made moratoriums, because we don't think that we need anymore at the time being. That's why we have made moratoriums. Second of all, let's consider traffic. Forget evacuation, just look at traffic on normal days, not to mention holiday weekends or hot, you know, it takes me an hour just to get from Tavernier to Lower Matacombe. So therefore, evacuation plans definitely are going to be misconstrued. Hurricanes in the last, I mean, look at what's happened to the West Coast. How many hurricanes have gone from tropical storms to Cat Fives in no time at all? So therefore, we need to make sure that we don't consider ourselves into that. Now, as far as the 178 vacant lots, you know, considering takings and all, like I say, Wyserota said that most of them don't even get to court. So therefore, we shouldn't even bother taking them. And as far as taking permits and saying, well, let's just keep them in the bank for later on. Well, we've seen with this council and maybe future councils, just because you say, well, we'll take them, but we won't use them, that doesn't necessarily mean that they won't. Somebody will say, oh, well, this person's been in here for so long or this person deserves it, and so we'll go ahead and give it to them. No, we do not need to accept any more future permits. And as far as buildout, when we reached our buildout total from way back in early 2000s, how can we be beyond buildout? If we were at buildout now, how can we be accepting 500 and more permits? So therefore, I say do not accept any more permits and we'll see what happens later on. Thank you.
Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Well, I'd like to bring something up, because you know, people get up here and they say things and stuff. But there's people right in this room that have taken, after Irma, a certain size house and built two houses. And she just said about the 565 from 2002. But, you know, I don't understand it, that people get theirs and then they're going to, I don't agree with it. You know, to take whatever size home and take it and, I forget how many square feet it was, I know how much it is, but it's not my place to say. But I think if I'm going to get up there, I mean, you know, that's two houses. That put more impact and we talk about water and we talk about everything else. But to me, that's a pot calling the kettle black. I have an issue with that, but... Council, anybody else got anything they want to say?
I have some remarks, but I mean, I don't mind talking about them, but I kind of wanted to hear what some of the other council members thought and said. I mean, not looking to pick a fight or anything, but I can get a sense there's going to be a diversity of ideas and opinions. And hopefully, we can come to a consensus where everybody wins some and everybody loses a little, gives up a little. So can I wait or?
Henry, you want to say?
I've been sitting here for four years, listening to the same thing. And I attended the meetings prior to the four years, that are going back to about 10 years. And with discussion was, how can we accommodate people and what their needs are as far as building goes? If we consider 330 plus 250 is 580, that's twice the number 10 years ago, twice. At some point in time, you have to understand, we've reached the ultimate. And you can jockey these numbers around, make everybody happy and this, that and the other. It's not going to work. At some point in time, you have to say enough is enough. And you continue trying to, what you say, Van?
Stuff the cotton in the bag?
Stuff the cotton in the bag. And you continue trying to make everybody happy and you can't do it. You have to say, this is it. You want to sue me, sue me. If you prevail, you prevail. You have to be big enough just to say, this is it. You continually try to do it. You know, we had a planner that did not agree with everybody. But I got several phone calls from people that said, you know, I didn't get what I wanted. But he was fair in his application to turn me down. I got those phone calls when that planner was on the staff. There's some point in time you have to say enough is enough. Don't go into all this massaging business of what the county's going to do and what we're going to do with the traffic and all that nonsense. You continually are hell-bent to allow the population and the building to grow. And it's just not there. I know in Key West, they handled a lot of complaints and desires. Out of the number that they handled, and I guess it was the attorney with the Key West, who's a pretty fair guy, I know him very well. But he continually won these takings claims, they're like nothing. So the time has come where you have to bite the bullet. If it's this council or the next council, you just have to do it. You can't make, trying to make revisions to satisfy everybody. A lot of these people bought and they knew there was a problem when they bought. And now all of a sudden, they're saying, well, I'm entitled this, that or the other. Damn it to hell, don't give anything to anybody, just try that. That's what I have to say. You just don't give anything to anybody. We're done. See you later. You want to go to Marathon, go to Marathon. You want to go to Key Largo, go to Key Largo. Let's stay the hell out of here. We just don't have room for you. Thank you.
Anybody else, Lisbon?
Let's see, I appreciate the conversation. And I am struggling a little bit with the nuance of some of the nuances here. I mean, I don't, it looks like the recommendation is a number that comes from adding the 54 B-Pass with the vacant lot parcel. Now, I was, I mean, I guess that's one way to come up with a number, but I think we can do a little better than that. And I think we need to do a little bit better than that because, and unfortunately, we've been put into, we, this council's been put into this position. We definitely saw this coming, this has been a secret. And I think it would be irresponsible to say, yeah, let's just take the 250 and hope we don't need them or make up how to use them later. And so a couple of points that were made publicly here. Ms. Raffanello mentioned an economically backed expectation of, from a property owner, that that's something to consider. I mean, if you, if you purchase, if you had a real estate transaction after 1992 or let's say 2002, I mean, it's no secret what was happening in our town with the lack of permits. We should consider that. I don't see that number in here or that analysis here, so it's, you know, that's just a guess. If you look at this analysis called vacant parcel analysis, I mean, you know, there are a lot of tools that I would like, it would have been nice to see some of the tools that could be applied to this in-depth analysis in order to come up with something other than just a dart thrown on a board. Because for example, there are 103 properties that could be unified. Now, when you look at the county, there are incentives that the county has created when someone unifies a property and that's an option for this town. I mean, you know, if I own the property next door to mine, I'm not, I really, you know, there would be an incentive, there is, there could be an incentive for that parcel to not be built on. And I don't see that analysis here, so it's something we're going to have to maybe think about on the fly. I mean, you know, two parcels have billboards on them. Well, there we go, those could be taken out. 24 parcels that could be acquired by the Florida Forever List. Twenty-four parcels that could be acquired by the Florida Forever List, there's another twenty-four. I mean, I think, unfortunately, this is, I, I mean, this is workshop-type conversation because, um, because the suggestion does not take into account the reality of these parcels that we have here. Um, so where does that leave us? Um, I'm not really sure, but certainly not in my mind, a, a suggestion of taking a two hundred and fifty allocations. The last thing I might say is that, um, I'm happy that we do have this moratorium in place. Um, and it, it certainly, I think, alerted the community to the fact that we are taking this seriously. Um, additionally, and, and we've talked about this over the last couple of years, just let's remember that we have a hundred and sixty-five plus, we, we have twenty-three administrative relief, a hundred and sixty-five early out allocations and eight affordable allocations. I mean, those are real building permits that can be applied in any way. Does it, and for any building owner or property owner, um, I mean, they, no one is owning property with the expectation that they're gonna build with a market rate allocation. So, in fact, we have enough allocations currently that we're holding that would apply to all of these vacant parcels, even though, again, this number of two hundred and fifty is, is, is not, is not an accurate reflection of what is needed in this town. So, you know, those are things to think about right now.
Okey-dokey. Um, first thing I would like to say is thank you to Jennifer. Um, she and I spent quite a while on the phone together today, and earlier I had asked her to send me the backup for how she got the two fifty. And she sent, I think it might have been sent to you, maybe you got it, maybe you didn't. But it was more data detail and information about how she arrived at that. And I would like to say on her behalf that, or for her, that I think that she did an outstanding job, given the task that she was getting, given, which is nearly impossible. Uh, and an incredible amount of data mining was necessary to come up with this information, but not a lot of information was given to her to get there. I mean, she, she had to hunt for things and, and still there's things missing. So, you know, while the two fifty may be a shocker number, I certainly hope no one casts a cloud over Jennifer for that. That's, that's the best that she could do with what she had and, and this lack of staff that she had to do it with. So I think she did an outstanding job, even though I don't like two fifty, um, with what she had to work with. So she walked me through this and we had a really good conversation about, um, that number and how we got here. And I, and I've been reflecting on this for a long, long time, uh, well before I got elected to the council in two thousand. You know, practicing law and, and being a real estate lawyer and, and handling, I counted one time over fifteen thousand real estate transactions in my career here, meeting people, coming and going from the Keys and buying and selling and developing. This has been on my mind a while. And I started in nineteen eighty-five when I lived in Marathon. And, you know, that was a different time in a different place and the idea of a takings claim was, why bother? You know, we got other options. Well, time, the, the sands of time have run out in the hourglass and it's gonna come time for us to close the door sooner or later. And, and I would agree with, uh, Ms. Raffinello, as well as with, uh, John's partner, Ms. Gonzalez. And, uh, there's another, uh, legal authority, the, the professor, um, at Nova, got away from me, I'm sure I'll think of it, I, I had his name a few minutes ago. Um, Grosso, Richard Grosso, has also written a paper. And I too used to have a fear of, of, uh, uh, litigation and lawsuits arising out of takings claims. But again, over a long span of a professional career as an investor here as well, and I built some houses myself, I don't see the fear of lit, of, of takings that I once did. It, it's, there's something there. Uh, by, by way of just an example, when we settled with Mr. Glenn, they started out at three million dollars and they had a platted subdivision that was done in late fifties, early sixties. I mean, all laid out, I mean, perfect. And you could, you could kind of say in a manner, when the government allows you to record a plat, that's a preliminary form of development approval.
Nineteen fifty-five.
Fifty-five, a hundred and forty or so, a hundred and sixty lots. I was terrified of that. But when we started digging into it, you know, they slept on their rights. And, uh, it, it was basically a mangrove swamp. And, you know, it wasn't what we did or as much as what the county did. The federal government stopped dredging and filling and, and wrecking swamps and killing mangroves and all the things that live there. So if you didn't do, if you didn't take advantage of it, get, while the getting was good back in those days, those, that ship has sailed. So the fear of litigation from people who own swamp property is gone. And if you bought property recently, once the laws have changed that prohibit things and you knew about that and you bought it anyway, I, 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 I don't see that you got a good case there. You're gonna have to fight pretty hard to get that. So I say that in response to taking, you know, two hundred and fifty of these as a possible mitigation for the offsets. Uh, I, I don't think we need that many. And, uh, you know, originally, you know, Buddy and, uh, um, Henry will remember, we've been talking about how many, how many vacant lots do we have and how many are buildable? And at one point, it was a thousand or eleven hundred and eleven or something like that. And I, and I was just shaking my head, holy crap, what are we gonna do about that? And now, it's been distilled down to a hundred and seventy-eight. Now, the, I, I, I wanna be clear, there are some commercial ones too. That, that does not count commercial, and I'm gonna say a word about that in a moment. So we've got it down to one seventy-eight. And then we've got our fifty-four or so that are in B-PASS. And, and to me, that's, that, that kinda boxes in the, it's the bookends of our, our limitations of our liability there. You know, it shouldn't be any more than that. So whatever those two numbers add up to is, is the maximum exposure. We have not talked about TDRs. Because we don't know how many there are. We don't have a registry or anything. I know of a lot of them from the work I used to do and people that I know. I, I'm gonna guess and say there's probably forty or fifty. And then people haven't even applied to redevelop their properties and, and some of these have not even been born yet, if you can say it that way. So there could be lots more. And those are, were intended with the original plan that we passed to, um, place those in, in, instead of us giving out an allocation. It was to take the place and to spread development around where it was overdeveloped in other areas and other properties. So I, I, I think we've not taken into account the benefit of the TDRs. Some people don't like them and might not like the way I use that word benefit with the phrase TDRs, uh, for us. But I think it, it can take the place of a lot of things that are there. There's a, there, speaking of litigation earlier, there is, when I also attended, uh, with Jennifer and, um, Rob, the, uh, March County presentation on ROGOs and takings and so forth. And, uh, they had been, they'd given another one, a presentation to us years before, and they, in their white paper had mentioned, uh, a case about where folks, uh, these folks up in Wisconsin owned two side-by-side lots, platted lots. One had a house, one didn't. They owned them for a long time, they wanted to build on, they built on one and then later on, the family changed and they wanted to build on the other and the court, the locals said, nope, you've already got your one and you've got your other property. So they sued and they took it all the way to the Federal Supreme Court, the highest court in the land. And they sued for a taking and the court said, nope, that's not a taking. You don't get the right to build on it because it's part of your estate, you have a combined estate. And that vacant parcel gives value to the one that you've developed, so you're done. So we can apply that same thing here, we haven't done it, the county's been looking at it. There's some folks that may wanna donate lots to us for tax credits, uh, for conservation. I've been involved with that in North Florida, I can tell you it works. There's a lot of farmers and ranchers that like that or give conservation easements. There, there's, there's, there's a lot of taking out that can be done with that. So, uh, the other side of the coin is, I mean, I, I think it boils down to how many do we need versus how many do we want? And the want part is, uh, what gets me. And so, you know, I've lived, I, I moved to South Florida, to South Miami, uh, actually to Miami in the summer of nineteen seventy-two. And, uh, lived in a hotel on, uh, Biscayne Boulevard because we lost our home and my dad had to find us a house. So that's where we lived for a summer and I got to live in downtown Miami and didn't like that. And then we moved to Old Cutler Road and, uh, where there was nothing but farms and a few houses and it was beautiful. Today, it's a bustling community. The place where I used to hunt and fish and, and camp and catch indigo snakes is now, uh, a, a big neighborhood and there's subdivisions there, there's a giant sewer plant there, it's all been built out. I don't even know where I'm at when I drive over there anymore. So that, that was sad because that was a beautiful natural place at one time. And, and, and so the Keys are similar and then we, you know, but we don't have any more land. And, and I don't know how much cotton you can stuff in a sack, but some people think we're full. I think we're full on a personal level. Uh, I, I've been coming here since seventy-two, lived here since eighty-five. And it was paradise then, meh, maybe not so much anymore. Are we really the sport fishing capital of the world? How many sport fish are we catching anymore? Wasn't like it was in the good old days. When was the last, you know, conquer out? Uh, a lot of the sport fish, you could go out without a GPS or anything and catch all the fish you wanted. Not anymore. So I catch my fish with a MasterCard at the fish market. So that's, that's how you have to do it today. So I, I'm rambling, you know, um, trying not to go too long. Winston Churchill said that a speech, a good speech is like a woman's skirt. It should be long enough to cover the subject matter, but short enough to keep your interest. So I'm gonna try to shorten this down a little bit, kind of a little humor, come on. It's my last night, you don't have to listen to this anymore after about another hour or so. So... So, so, so I'm gonna try to make this like a mini skirt and shorten it up. I, I think two fifty is too much. I, I think, I think on, on the side of getting some, um, we have allowed people to enter the B-PASS system. We have taken their application and we've cut it off, but those who got in under the wire, I think, may have something there. And I've mentioned this before at meetings, in twenty seventeen, it might have been twenty eighteen, uh, under the direction and the drive of Ken Davis, who was our, uh, village councilman at that time, the village sent out a notice, uh, to be a certified mail or registered mail to every vacant lot owner in the village. I got one, I still have it, I still have the envelope. And it said with a little pamphlet, in so many words, if you have vacant land, we have a limited number of allocations left. If you wanna build on it, now's the time, come in, apply, or suffer the consequences. And so I did that, others did that, and, uh, the folks in B-PASS, some of them probably did that. So I think we have something, we, there's, there's a concern there, we have to do something about that. So can we handle another two hundred and fifty, you know, families here? The traffic, I mean, every home that's built generates so many trips. When you look under these planning manuals, they have this one, is it called ITC? Okay, I'm gonna let her get that in a minute. Uh, it's like, in, in the comp, old comp plan, it said like eight point nine trips per day per house or something like that. So let's say it's five and you multiply it by two fifty, that's a twelve hundred and fifty new trips every day on the highway. And if you put those on all upper Matacumbi Key, the bottleneck will get even more bottlenecked. So I, I think we have to take those things to, into account. I don't think we're gonna take cars off the road. We can't control what happens north of Tavernier Creek or south of the, uh, Lower Matacumbi. That, that's the county and, and the cities. So if they're gonna wanna overbuild or develop out to the max, that's on them, but they all will pass through us. And we just have to work with that the best that we can. Um, so, oh, another thing I would mention that has frustrated me and amazed me since day one is we talk about dwelling units and B-PASS allocations and ROGOs, but we don't talk about the size. And Buddy, uh, you were making reference to, uh, I don't know which house or who did it, but uh, one house became two, or a little house became a big one, or whatever it is. That, that phenomenon has been occurring through the village for the last twenty or twenty-five years. So legally, a one-bedroom house, six hundred and fifty square feet, has the same legal significance as a ten-bedroom house, it's ten thousand square feet. I don't, I don't know how, why can't we think about that as far as impacts and stuff goes? That to me is crazy, but hey, I'm crazy, so whatever. But, um, so with that, I, I would say, uh, maybe this is the time we do horse trading or not, but I, I, I can't go with two fifty, I can't go with two hundred. Um, but we need at least fifty-four, I know that, so...
Mark, are you saying fifty-four?
I don't know what I'm saying, I, I have not finished thinking it through. And I'm looking for, you know, more information to come up with a consensus and a good answer instead of just what Mark wants. So, um, I'll stop talking now, thank you.
Sharon?
That was a lot. It was. Um, I think everybody's pretty much said what we all feel. Um, the, uh, I know Jennifer's doing her job, so that needs to come up above anything. No one is pointing any fingers at her. Um, the issues that keep coming up is, as long as Marathon and Key West are gonna open their doors for the floodgates, they gotta go through us. So, uh, when people talk about the traffic, I always find it funny when people talk about the traffic in Almerata because unless we have a flyover, they gotta go through us. So as long as Marathon and Key West want all they can get, our traffic is not gonna change at this point. And so that's an issue. The thought of every vacant lot being built on scares the hell, oops, scares me. And, um, that's to me, it should be taken right off. Like Elizabeth had a bunch of good points about the billboards, about, you know, combining lots. So the, the, the need for two hundred and fifty, I don't believe is there either. Um, I think, um, we are, I have a lot of people down here. Mark, you talk about, um, coming here in seventy-six, you should have, well, not to show my age, but when I was little, you could just go in front of our house and fill the bottom of our boat with crawfish and conchs and starfish. And it was, it was a killer place to grow up and I'm blessed by having that in my life. Um, I, I think we are, and, and part of the problem falls on these councils. If we didn't allow people to buy hotel units and take that hotel room and then turn it around and move it and build a Mac Daddy mansion of ten bedrooms, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in. I've always had a problem with that.
I don't think it's hotel room sharing that they're, that they're doing that, it's TDRs that...
Well, the size that they come from is my point.
People shouldn't, that, people that have done that say, come here and say, we can't do this, we do that, you know? Hey, come on, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you're gonna do it, you shouldn't be calling other people out on it.
Well, okay, uh, my point was, is that we do take small, TDRs that come from a small house, a conk house, and the next thing you know, it's a ten-bedroom on the beach, side to side. So that, that has to fall on the people who allowed that to happen in the first place, in all honesty.
Trailer parks.
There you go, trailer parks. So my point is, is I don't think we need two fifty either, Mark. But, um, and I also really wanna figure out this vacant lot thing that we don't do, every vacant lot. But my concern is, and what Ty said, is that who's gonna get these two hundred and fifty? If, if we don't take them, not that I wanna take them, but just think about Marathon, even more traffic, even more people going through us to get to Marathon. I can't believe the county would give out that many myself. I mean, I, I, I'm sort of shocked, but if, if we don't take those, somebody's gonna get them. And I'm not saying we're gonna take them, I'm just saying, it's not like they're gonna go away, is the way I'm understanding it, correct? That somebody will get them. And so that, that is very scary. And I don't know who in Tallahassee decided this, but I think we need to talk to them. But anyhow, I agree with you, I don't think we need that many. I don't think, I think we need to look at some of these vacant lots and figure out a better system for that and take some of them right off the list. So, uh, again, I think we're all sort of much in agreement here, you know? I mean, do you wanna take all two fifty, Mr. Mayor?
Take off what?
Take all two fifty.
I don't know about all two fifty, but I think we need to get some. We have people that are in the system that we told, okay? We told, Van, please, you know what, I have my mic on, okay? You know what, I don't need you to tell me, okay, what, my mic is on. All right? So Van, please, respect us. You don't need to holler out in a meeting, you can ask. Okay? You know, we, we, we open the system and we let people come in... You know, we open the system and we let people come in, and now, now people, I don't think it's right. I waited seven years to get a permit. My first permit I've ever pulled in Al Marada, because there was a moratorium on, all right? But, it's interesting that people came from the county, that weren't even in the county, and within one year, we had a moratorium going on, but people built houses in Venetian shores. Now you tell me how that, stuff like that. What, we need to make this system fair. Whatever we're doing, it's gotta be, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. It's not, you know, we gotta make it equal. The other thing is, is we should have closed the system a long time ago. We can't, now we're taking away administrative people that have been waiting over four and five years? Is that fair? I did administrative relief. I had to file it. Myself. That's an extra fifteen hundred bucks. All right? So, you know, I don't know if two fifty is the right number, but let me tell you something. If the county is gonna build down there, they're gonna building, they're gonna build Marathon, they're gonna build South, okay, this, us taking these permits isn't the only traffic problem in Al Marada. But for some reason, everybody's blaming it on Al Marada, but it's not Al Marada. What about the eighty-six units that are gonna go Tavonier? Okay? Everybody thought we're gonna give those to that project. We didn't. They got them from the county. So, what about those people when they want to go to Key West? Is that not putting more traffic in Al Marada? Yes. Okay. All right, so when they build more houses in Key Largo? So, I just, I think we need to really think about it. We need to look at our, we need to look at our lots that are buildable. But we gotta do something for these people that we have engendered. They went through our system, just like these lot dedication people, were told they could go out and buy a lot and get the extra points and all of a sudden, you know, almost three years later, after we tell them to follow our system and we don't give them the permit. We shouldn't, we either stop and don't tell them, you know, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. Follow the system. And then they still can't, and they put money out. I don't think it's right.
Let me say something. I don't think any of us want to do that. I think you, I think we all want to see who's in the system have it. But the fault lies in the past councils for not passing things that should have been done before. And so, that's why when you put people up here, you better seriously know who you're putting up here, because we do have people in this community who want to keep building and building and building. And I, for one, don't think any of us want to deprive the people in the system. That's what, fifty-something? Yeah, so it's not like, it's way far reach from two fifty. I don't think any of us are saying them, but we have to fix this broken system. And the broken system is, we need to find, I don't know, how to stop doing what we keep doing in this town. And that's taking more building rights, more permits, I mean...
I'd like to add a little more fuel to the fire, if I may.
Well, Mark, you know, Sharon talked about TDRs, okay? And these big corporations that have came in here that are buying little mom and pops and then taken, moving the units and then gonna build affordable housing there, which, the whole key's being taken over by corporate America, okay? That's adding more traffic to the road, okay? More traffic in our neighborhood, in your neighborhood, I mean, all over. So, it's, and you just spoke on, I know people that have, that people don't even know, they have twelve TDRs they've been sitting on. People don't even know they have them.
I know of a lot of them out there.
And I know about square footage, commercial square footage, over a hundred thousand square feet, that was right in this village, right on this island, that actually could, it could have been transferred and used. The owner could have used it. And could it, could it go back? Maybe. Get a good attorney. But I'm saying, there's lots of stuff unknown that we don't even know about, that's sitting out there. I mean, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I just, I'm not trying to, you know, confuse things or make it harder for us. But I think there's a bigger picture, and we need to put our arms around all this information and come to a rational conclusion. And it's not gonna be really easy. But, there's a little bit more to the allocations than meets the eye. Our comp plan requires, or maybe it suggests, Jennifer will, and John will straighten me out, but in the original comp plan, with the original data, you know, when you build a house, that creates a need for commercial services, because people have to have a place to shop for groceries and get their car fixed and go to the doctor or dentist or whatever.
School service, their yard maintenance.
Everything that we need to take care of ourselves. And so, there's a formula. Each single-family residence generates the need for, and I want to say it's two hundred and thirty-eight square feet of commercial space. And we saw this in action recently, when we took the three hundred units from the state, we suddenly found out we had seventy-one or seventy-four thousand square feet, new square feet to work with, because remember, we were almost out when we did the approval for SD Marine here, and then Natchitka had their big conference center built. We were down to just a few thousand. Well, not anymore. We have a surplus, and we've had, and so, I did calculation, you know how good I am at math. And so, if you do two thirty-eight times two fifty, I came out with fifty-nine thousand five hundred, just shy of sixty thousand more square feet. We don't have to use it all. I'm just saying, if we do this, the impact is more than you think it is because of that. We're gonna create the need for all this other stuff. You know, maybe everybody drives to Publix in Tavonier and it's not a big deal. But, so there's that to think about. One other thing is that, you know, decisions have consequences. And so, we sat in this room about a month ago, and we came together on a budget, and part of that budget was we're gonna spend a million dollars, well, I shouldn't say that. We set aside a million dollars for land acquisition. Now, if we have more permits than we need, there's no driver for that. Why would we wanna, you know, spend money buying land when we can just give them a permit and save the money? Well, I mean, I don't think that way. I have my reasons why I think it's a good idea, but councils after us may not. And I'll say this my way. I don't trust the councils of the future, not anybody in particular running for the next office. That's not what I'm saying. But let me give you an example. Jennifer gave us a brief history on B-Pass, and when it started out, we got two hundred and sixty-two units. Well, that was divided up about equal between market rate and affordable. And the next go-around in twenty thirteen, well, they changed all that. And suddenly, they thought, well, we don't need so many affordable, you know, let's push that to the market rate. So, it went from fourteen to twenty-two. And then, that addition to market rate then dropped down the affordable. And in my view, that was a horrible mistake because that only contributed to the deficit that we're suffering from, and I think is a crisis, over the lack of affordable housing. Have we kept that? Well, it was called affordable then. Workforce and affordable are not the same. They're different species.
I understand, but the affordables that I've seen aren't affordable.
Well, also, back then, the affordables only had a short-term deed restriction, and those expired. So, I don't know why we did that. That was crazy, but, you know. But I'm just saying, and so, here's some good news, something positive. I'm gonna say something positive, so please listen. We just hired a killer planning firm to help us write a new comp plan and new LDRs, and we have all these elements there. Jennifer's been working with them, or gonna be working with them, and her staff, and we're gonna get new staff. I mean, we got a chance to literally rewrite the book. So, let's take what we need, that we know we need, and not tempt fate on, you know, loading it up with extra stuff. I mean, you know, if there's, if there's a six-pack of beer in the refrigerator, you're only gonna drink a six-pack, right? So, I'm just saying, if it's not there, we can't use it. And so, why tempt people in the future? You know, I don't think that we should have varied the, we should have reduced the affordables in the past. That's how we got the problem we have today. Let's think decades down the road instead of weeks. And so, and so, be...
Twenty-five.
Well, you know...
We don't even, so, are you done? I have something to comment.
I don't know if I'll ever be done, but I'm gonna shut up and let you speak, so.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I mean, you've made some interesting points. And, and what I'm, part of what I'm hearing you say is acknowledging this affordable housing, the lack of affordable housing that we have. And I want to just go back to the fact that we, we are, we have one hundred and sixty-five, it says it right in our PowerPoint, reserve early evacuation affordable units, and we have eight more affordable available. I mean, those are real, are real permits that can be used to build on vacant land. And that in combination with the fact that the twenty-seventeen letter went out, everyone knows with vacant lots that they need to build. I mean, what are we, what's the problem here? We have fifty-four people in the system that we put them there. And unless my, I mean, as I recall, there was, there was some tussle over the idea of putting a moratorium on, but I'm glad that we're now in agreement that there's some sense in putting a pause on allowing more people into that system. I think that we're all in consensus here. But, I mean, what I'm hearing you say, I mean, I'm hearing everybody say that, you know, so, you know, take sixty and be done with it and move on. And, and, you know, I think that you touched on it, Buddy, that we need to be fair, we need to be equitable, things aren't fair. And I think it's because no council, and you mentioned it as well, has wanted to make the hard decisions that, like, we have no plan, we're just winging it, it's never, you know, like, no one wants to put their foot down. And, and, I mean, at some point, we really do have to, I mean, and we have to, we have to, someone has to make hard decisions. And, you know, I don't, and maybe, maybe this is it. And this issue that, we continue to revisit the traffic issue. I mean, yes, everybody has to go through here, but guarantee, the more houses we put in this town, it just becomes very uncomfortable to live. I mean, it is a busy town already. Who cares about the traffic? Do we need more? So, you know, to, maybe, maybe what I'm hearing you say is, do the minimum, do fifty-five market rate. We have enough permits. And takings are, I think, more of a myth than we like to think, and we have other tools to use. That, with that whole combination, because it's not a one, there's not a one solution here. We have a lot of tools that we can pick up. And if what we're being asked to do is come up with a number, well, so then, let's say fifty-four, or whatever it is that's in B-Pass, on the B-Pass list.
You know, what about the young people that grew up here? Like, I'm thinking of Richard Black, you know, how long he waited, a guy, you know, young couple. But I'm thinking, you know, I don't, I don't know, man. Like, my, my son would love to move from Key West back up here, but it, I mean, how could he get a permit? You know what I'm saying? He doesn't have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to go buy a TDR, four hundred thousand dollars to buy a TDR.
He would need, he would need three times five hundred thousand to build. So, maybe you do get a TDR, but then you gotta build something. I mean, it's impossible. I mean, it's a very expensive place to live.
What about if your daughter, she goes to college, she graduates, she wants to live here?
No, she's gonna have to live in a tent, in the yard. I mean, let's be honest, that's where we are, you know. We, we're past the point of thinking that, you know, a young family is gonna come and this is gonna be their starter home. I mean, there's nothing under a million dollars in this town that you want to live in. Let's be honest. I mean...
And again, that is the problem that, over the years, has been created by people just doing what they want to do. And nobody's saying anything, and people making money from doing this. And now we're in this situation where, you know, I mean, what are we supposed to just keep building because your son or your daughter may want to come back? You know what I'm saying? So, we have to stop somewhere.
How do young, young people can't even make it?
They can't. They can't. They can't live here. Can I take one other comment on this? Because it's, well, when you're done?
No, go ahead.
I mean, here's an example. The next council in one of the upcoming meetings is gonna look at the Islander issue. We're increasing the density at the Islander with fifty-five extra units, and guess what? We're building affordable housing for the people who are gonna work to serve those additional fifty-five units. I mean, that is a decision that's gonna be super hard.
Fifty-five or thirty-four?
Fifty-five. Fifty-five.
I thought it was thirty-four.
Okay, I think it's fifty-five. I've been looking at it closely. But the point is that, that this council, whoever is sitting here, is going to agree to make that happen, change all the zoning, and then build affordable housing, so that the people who work there for those additional fifty-five units that we're allowing to build can, can, can live somewhere, when we already have people who, like, again, like, what if a kid wanted to come and rent a place here? It's impossible. So, when we think about, when we were, we're having this, you know, like, come to Jesus moment here about affordable housing, but then when we're actually asked to make decisions, like this one that's coming up with the Islander, I mean, that is going, I have a feeling that's gonna pass, and what, all we're doing is allowing a corporation to put a bunch of more units of hotel units and then building housing for the people to work at that place that we just allowed to increase by half? I mean, that is foolish, and it's gonna be controversial, and it's gonna be, but, I mean, the fact is, yeah, my kid can't come, I mean, I don't know. I doubt if my kid's gonna come back and live here. She's got, she, you know, I don't know, maybe when she's seventy.
I'm just saying that as a...
I hear you. A hundred percent.
The days, I know where you live, and I know that street very well, and, you know, the days of the small houses, Richie's father, I call him Bones, his name was Warren, but he built all these nice little rental houses that were like two-bedroom, one bathroom, that were reasonable, and people could live there until they got something going. But, and I know Al Marada has became, you know, I mean, the house right there on East Ridge, my father paid fourteen thousand dollars for that house in nineteen sixty-one.
That's amazing.
And today, they sell for over a million.
Yeah. Same house.
Well, it's been renovated, you know.
So, I think what we're getting at here is, take a minimum number. Is that what I'm hearing us all say?
Well, I'm gonna say the one last thing, and it's right on the wall. Every unit we add has an impact on the right of quiet enjoyment and our quality of life.
That ship sailed.
Well, yeah, but two wrongs don't make a right. And, I mean, we don't, we don't need to make it any worse than it is. And, but, you know, there definitely has to be some kind of a balance, because there are people who have an expectation that we created or allowed them to have. And I think we're on the hook for that.
That's fifty-four people.
At least fifty-four.
Fifty-four people.
But, but then there's the TDRs that are out there, and, and we may, when we go through the comp plan and the LDRs, there may be some way for our new consultants to create a meaningful economic use of some of these properties that does not involve the building of a house and the creation of a new dwelling unit. And, you know, one of those is what the county had with their program, where if you have a lot next to your house and you want to use it for something other than a house, you know, a garage, a pool, a tennis court, a garden, whatever you want, as long as you don't have a dwelling on it, they would buy it for you for the assessed value, and you get to keep the land. What a killer deal. And we may want to do that for some folks. And that would take those, take the liability off of us, they get some meaningful use of it. And then, if we make some lots that are kind of hybrid, you could do a little commercial stuff with it, light-duty stuff. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities there that are in the future.
Four years ago, I came up with the same thing as the county, to spread out the B-Pass until twenty twenty-six. You remember that?
Mm-hmm. Does I change my mind for you on that?
You changed your mind.
The other thing I would throw in there is what Henry's kind of hinting at here is that, if we just did the fifty-four, and, and I don't know if the next council's gonna give them all out in one shot, or kind of spread that out. I mean, I don't see why they shouldn't just give them all out and get it over with. But, we need to stretch out, give ourselves a buffer, some time to sort things out, and to, you know, let the comp plan go through and the new LDRs, and give ourselves some, you know, so maybe we need some more units to kind of just buy some time with, if nothing else.
So, can I ask a question to that? And maybe this is a question for John, because what, what it looks like we're being asked to do is come up with a number, but there's also a resolution. And so, can that resolution incorporate some language that talks about some withholding of those market rate until a certain period after the comp plan, whatever? Can that be included in this resolution?
I think so, but the next council can come along and...
Yeah, but guess what? They're not here yet. So, and they could.
This resolution is actually just a request to the county as to what the, the village would like to request to the county. I mean, that would be something in there, wouldn't necess, that would, that would not be something that really conveyed to the county. That's an internal issue. I mean, certainly, we could, could put something like that in there. As Councilmember Greg alluded to, I mean, obviously, you know, resolutions are potentially subject to change, or not. They could, you know, it could be the same thing. But, yeah.
But, so, so I'm hearing you say, yes, that could be not necessarily a component that's conveyed to the county, but it could be incorporated in the resolution as a, as a description of how we, how we treat those. And I think it's important. And, okay, whatever, the council, I mean, anything can be changed in the future, but it's important, right? Because it would give, again, our planning department time, our comprehensive planner time to, to do something that, to your point, Buddy, is...
planner time to, to do something that, that, to your point, Buddy, is, is fair, permanent, as much as permanent can be, and, and gives us some time. I don't know what that language would look like. Maybe someone can suggest it.
I, I was just gonna follow up on that, cause as I was trying to think it through, I mean, one thing you might be able to do is, you know, the village recommends receiving X number of B-Pass allocations, should they be made available, to be distributed over. And you could, if you wanted to put in a time period, or, or something like that, where you're talking about lengthening out the, the, the time to give them out. You could put, maybe put something like that in. I don't think that would necessarily be inappropriate to even send to the county, frankly.
That's exactly what Kai Harris said.
I thought he told us to take them off.
Well, no, no, but he said, stretch them out for fifty years, or whatever he, or...
I don't think we can give fifty, but we talked, I heard numbers like ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen.
I mean, but...
No, no, what I meant, he was saying, stretch them out. Don't give, you know, only, it's, it's, it's very slow growth, it's very, you know, you're, there's a lot of cities that do that.
That was my comment about Marathon. They're gonna go somewhere. So, yeah, that scares me too, you know?
But, I, I mean, do, we don't, I mean, we can't control that.
Oh, I know, I know.
We can't, they, they can go to the limits. If they, that's nothing, we, we have no control there.
So what's the lang, are we in agreement that we could add some language that talks, that gives the, gives some buffer for the work that we are, that this council is saying has to be done? That comp plan has to be done? The, we still have no plan, you know, our planning staff still needs time to work on this analysis. Is there language that anyone could suggest? To, to give everyone time?
I think John should figure it out.
I don't think he can.
Why don't we go with the two seventy?
No, we're saying like fifty-four. The ones who are in the...
I think we need a buffer.
Yeah, I can't go with fifty-four. I would say, I'd say half, a hundred and twenty-five or something.
Can I just, can I say that, again, we've got twenty-three administrative relief. We have a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-five additional affordable housing units. I mean, that...
That's affordable. That's, there's, there's...
Isn't that what you're saying? Like, the, the, the way we want to populate our town is to, to make whole the people, the fifty-four people on that list. And then, like, God help us if someone who is a teacher wants to maybe live here, or your kid, or my kid. Well, here are the, here they are right here. Here, we already have these allocations. And we, we wipe that off the book when we say, let's take a market rate allocation for every vacant parcel here, because that means they're all gonna be multimillion dollar homes. And, and we just sat here and talked about the need for affordable housing. We have those.
Workforce, is what I call it. Affordable is...
And, and here is...
A five hundred thousand dollar house, how does a young person even afford a five hundred?
They can't. But, but we have a hundred and sixty-five early out affordable available. And that is the multi-unit. I mean, we have those. And so why do we need a hundred and fifty market rate? I guarantee, and talking about, I mean, we don't even know who's coming onto the council, those will be used. Going back to your six-pack. I mean, you give a hundred and fifty market rate, they'll be gone. That, that, I mean, let's just then cancel the affordable housing, anything.
So let's, let's just, just throw a few numbers out. The number for Jennifer, from Jennifer is a hundred and seventy-eight vacant lots. The number of B-Pass alloca, of B-Pass applications is five, fifty-four. If you add those together, I get two thirty-two. Subtract from that our administrative relief, and the ten of this, and the two of that, which is another thirty-six, whatever she has on that page. So you subtract thirty-six from two thirty-two, that leaves one ninety-six total, you know? That, that would, to me, that would be the absolute maximum. But, some of those, we may, they may, that number may come down further, because there may be some that are combined.
A hundred and three properties could be unified, so take off a hundred and three.
So there's, there's the, the, some unification ones there, so...
Take off twenty-four for Habitat.
And then TDRs, and then Habitat.
So we don't need any?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm trying to get us to a realistic number.
So go ahead and keep doing your little math equation. Because when you take away a hundred and three properties that could be unified, which would mean that, that some council in the future is making a policy for this.
Well, I don't know if a hundred and three is half, cause if you put two together, you know, you have to take half of a hundred and three.
These are properties that are joint...
I, I don't, I don't know the detail.
Fifty, plus two for billboards, plus twenty-four with Habitat, that's seventy-five.
Before you take away all those in the seven categories in here, I just wanna caution you, it says that, that needs further evaluation of all those categories. Because since this list was written, I, even though our, number one, there are eight parcels in Tavernero, and these parcels have benefits, she uses, the zoning district allows for accessory uses. Tavernero's HOA does not allow for accessory uses. So I found that out after this list was written. So, so there's further review that needs to be, that has to happen. So I'm not suggesting leave them all, but I'm also not asking that you be careful that you not remove all of them.
On the, on the total number you got, that was as of two thousand and two?
The vacant, they were vacant as of two thousand and two. We can try to update that.
Could we have given a B-Pass allocation to some of those after two thousand and twenty?
Um, maybe it's unlikely B-Pass, more likely they could've gotten a TDR.
Hmm, okay. Well, I'm just, there, there's some things, we don't know all, we don't have all the data, we can't.
Then we need, are we tabling this? Is that the deal?
No, no, no. I wanna make it, I wanna be part of the decision tonight. If that's the last thing literally that I get to do, sitting at this dais, I wanna have my fingerprints on it. If, if they get erased later, too bad.
What are you saying? A hundred and fifty? You said a hundred and ninety?
I told you at the beginning, I didn't know the number, cause I wanted y'all to talk to me. So we're getting better, you know? So, I, I would say we need, we need to, whatever it is, it needs to have a point seven five, cause we've got point two five left over from something else. We need to make that one whole. So, just kind of a joke, but practically speaking, it would be nice to have a round number. So, you know...
Well, Mark, as your, as your last, you know, parting, parting the dais, why don't you make a stand for affordable housing? We've got this, we, we have them here. They cover every vacant lot that we own.
We, this is a number, the county wants to know how many. They don't care what we do with them. Now, I would love for it to all be affordable, but...
When, well, if you really would, because we have those, those allocations, then what we could possibly agree on is we make those fifty-four people whole, we add five more for who knows what. There's sixty, sixty market rate. Because since you're making a stand for affordable housing, and we already have them reserved for the, for the city, then, there we go. You know, good for you. You, you're walking out with a nod toward affordable housing, as we all are. Which, we've been talking about this for two years, and we've done nothing on that.
If I was king for a day, I would depopulate Isle of Maratha.
Well, you're not, but you could take a stand for affordable housing. Thank God, yes.
But, what I'm saying is, I don't, I think we need to leave some in there. We, we don't wanna handicap the next council. We don't wanna handicap Able City when they start to, they, they're gonna need some tools to work with. They're gonna need some flexibility.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about principles. We're talking about what do we believe in. And we all just sat here and said that our kids aren't gonna be able to live here. And that's a nod toward taking a stand for using the affordable housing allocations that we have. That's what's happening. And if, and, you know, you can't, I mean, this whole, like, let's say one thing and do another. I mean, that's what's happening here when we say, let's take a hundred and fifty units.
I, I don't think, I think a hundred and fifty's too high.
Good.
I, I don't know, but I'll tell you something. Some of these people like this firm that we hire, they are very good at, for redevelopment, and whatever they're gonna come up with. And they, if they, they're very creative. And, you know, what, what's it gonna, Jennifer, if we put a unit on top, let's say, let's say Sharon's flower shop, that, she needs a permit to put units up there, right?
Yes, she needs an allocation for any residential unit that would go on top of that.
All right. Because I know Ms. Pasadomo, Senate President, talked about it. All these businesses that we have, why can't they have residents above them, instead of taking more, more land as a workforce housing, or, or, or a residence?
See, this is, yeah, this is, I was just gonna mention ADUs. Like, this is part of the issue down here in Monroe County, because we're an area of critical state concern. We're not like the other places that can just hand out permits to everybody that wants to build an ADU, or, you know, apartments atop their flower shop. We have to allocate to every single residential unit, including a five hundred square foot ADU. So, that's why, you know, these are so important. And I just also, I think John had something to say, but I also wanted to just say that the, we have a moratorium right now, and you all keep referring to that, and that is true. But that ends in February. And once that ends, people will be able to apply again for B-Pass. And that, we'll just go on a list. And if we have new allocations, which is fine, they'll just sit there on a list.
And, I mean, it's a good point, right? But, let's hope that, that the next council realizes that without any kind of policy, and any kind of actual new policy, then they're gonna just be in the same position that we were before we said, let's put a hold on things.
Excuse me. On that, on the moratorium, John, if, if the next council wanted to extend that, it would have to be by an ordinance. It couldn't be by a resolution.
Correct. Yeah, it would be done the same way.
So you need what?
Readings. And then we'd have to go back before Commerce for approval as well.
So that, so to back up the start date, wouldn't that have to start in the December meeting?
Yeah, it would, yes. You, you could have...
Pardon?
Could we give direction to, to, to get that started?
We, we could do that, and they could decide not to use it, or to use it at their leisure. The Vice Mayor will be there, so, so we can, we can tee this up for you and the next group, if you would like that.
Yeah, let's do it.
It would be, you can give direction to staff to bring back a, another extension. Obviously, that's subject to approval of the, of the next council, but you can certainly give staff, uh, direction for us to bring that back to the December meeting.
Let's do that.
So what are we saying with this table at the end?
No, no, wait.
No, no, that, that...
This was a moratorium extension, I'm sorry.
That's just extending the moratorium. In December, we'll have to start working on extending it.
And just be, that's the, on the market rate B-Pass, cause the, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, the, the administrative relief one is still pending approval from Commerce. So that's not...
That will extend beyond that. Yeah. Okay. So, so we're giving them direction to do that? That will be a tool, a tool for you to use?
I will make sure it gets done.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Now, meanwhile, back to the...
So, John, tell us what Mark just talked about. I wanna know, so I understand this.
He was talking about a, they talked about the, the moratorium. He was, he was pointing out that the moratorium is set to expire in February. So in order for, for, if the, if the next council wants to continue or extend that moratorium, which it's allowed to do under the ordinance, it would require two readings and approval from Commerce. So that takes time. So what Mark had asked was to, for direction to be given to staff to bring back a, a second extension of the B-Pass market rate moratorium for the December meeting for consideration for the next council.
And you're gonna tie a string around my finger to remind me, right?
Yes, yes.
I know some people don't want that, and don't like that, but, but I just, if the tool is there, you can decide to use it or not.
With the comp plan coming, I think it's important.
Yeah, you don't wanna cloud up the comp plan with...
So now we need to decide is the number, correct?
So you, you wanna do this like an auction? You know, we start low, and we go high, or...
Can I just make one other comment? So let's go back to the fact that in twenty seventeen, everyone with a vacant parcel was sent a letter saying, we're running, we have no more permits, or something to that effect.
We have a limited number. If you wanna build, apply now.
And so this, this speaks to, like, what, you know, sorry, if you didn't see that, I'm sorry that you didn't step up. And let's...
But people still have property rights. And, you know, you guys are talking about this, Mark, this letter, and Elizabeth, you're talking about it. Aqueduct sent out letter after letter after letter to people that had to put their grinder pumps in. And you know what? They just kept ignoring it, and ignoring it, and ignoring it. So, I mean, people have property rights.
I mean, we, we all do have property rights. But, I mean, except for the fact that we are limited in our property rights by the number of allocations. Just like, you know, we have property rights, but we have to follow the law. And the law, we don't have any, we are out of permits, and we get to make decisions about how to move that forward. I mean...
I wanna ask a legal question, please. John, let's say that we wanted to take some B-Pass allocation units, more than fifty-four, but we wanted to stretch that out into the future. And what would be a safe number for us to give out each year? How, how much time could we buy, is where I'm going? What would be a safe minimum number we could give out each year without high risk of a takings claim, or something like that? Six a year? Ten a year? Three a year?
I would say...
Safe number.
Something that is more than de minimis. I mean, I think, I, I would like to stretch it out as long as possible, because I think that that gives, from, from a liability standpoint, that could, that puts us in the best position to defend a claim, because you still have the opportunity to come off of the list. You know, there's not really any direct, there's not really any law on that. But I, I would just say, from, from my experience in the courtroom, and with Burt Harris' claims, I would say something more than just a de minimis number. So something more than, you know, one.
Or like one a quarter? Would, you think that would be?
Yeah, I mean, at that point, you're talking about four a year. I would think that's more than de minimis. I mean, it's certainly something I would feel comfortable going in defending. Yeah.
If we took forty extra over the B-Pass stuff, that would give us ten years.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up on that question?
Sure.
One twenty-five.
Can I, I just wanted, one follow-up. So, you're talking about, tell, tell me how property rights are infringed upon when, when we're, what we're offering, it would, what we're offering could be an affordable, an affordable allocation, as opposed to a market rate. How, how is that seen in the court, in the eyes of someone trying to say that they're being deprived of something?
Yeah, well, it, so it depends, it, it'll be very fact-specific. It'll depend on when the, as, as we talked about before, when they purchase the property, what, in really the, the phrase that, that is utilized in Burt Harris' takings claims, cause Burt Harris is very unique to Florida. We have very unique laws here in terms of property rights, is reasonable investment-backed expectations. So, if somebody has, if the court were to find that somebody has a reasonable investment-backed expectation of a market rate, single-family home, the, offering them a, an affordable housing unit, at least under the laws that currently stands, it's, there, there's some issues still being dealt with on appeal, would not avoid liability. It would go towards potential damages, that we could limit potential damages. It's, again, like I said, that, this, this whole area is in flux. It's actually a case out of Marathon that, that, that deals with this. And, and the, the village is involved as a, on an amicus brief, you all gave us direction to, to support Marathon on that. So, it, it's extremely fact-specific. So if they purchased before, you know, if they purchased at a certain point, I think we have good defenses that say, you have no reasonable investment-backed expectation, market rate affordable or otherwise, because you knew, you knew what the law was. If there were some changes in the law that applied to their property that impacted it, then I think something like that would go towards, at least currently, hopefully, the, the court will change their opinion. But currently, that would go towards damages, the limitation on damages.
So, so Burt Harris is a kinda claim for something not quite to the level of a full-blown taking. It's, it's more of a, you know, like a dent in the fender kind of a thing, instead of a complete totaling out. And...
This conversation would be easier if we knew when these one hundred and seventy-eight parcels were purchased, but we don't. So this is just...
So the, the suggestion is, is the ones purchased most recently will have the hardest time making a claim. So, there's a lot of those.
But we don't know that number, do we?
We don't. And so that's why I'm saying, if we, if we go to fifty-four, and we miss something, we could be stepping in a hole that we can't get out of. And that, that's not good for everyone. So, it, it, I mean, listen, I, I told you, I'd depopulate the place. I would plant hammocks everywhere I could, up and down the highway, and fill it up with snails and snakes and everything. But that's not gonna happen. So, the reality is, we gotta take, take what we can, and to minimize what we know could be coming. And so, we're gonna guess, I think we're gonna estimate tonight, but we gotta do the best we can. We don't wanna handicap the next council, or the planners.
So we're gonna come up with a number, and then say that we're gonna pass it out one a quarter for the next twenty years? Is that what...
Well, four a year, for ten years equals forty. Fifteen years is sixty. So, I mean, and, you know, we can do, we can...
Sixty allocations, is that what we're asking for?
I'm just giving you numbers.
The thing about this number is, it's a complete shot in the dark. There's, there's no, there is no right number here, cause we don't have all the information. That, that is, that is a fact. We simply do not, this is a made up, this is arbitrary. So, you know. I mean, so it doesn't really, I mean, we're, we're, there's no right or wrong answer. No, you, no one can be faulted here. I would say, let's go lower. Let's go sixty rather than a hundred.
Nope.
I think we need a more, a little more pushing there.
So what is the number? It doesn't, because again...
Want me to say a number?
Sure, because this is, we don't have enough information. If we knew when these parcels were purchased... If we knew when these parcels were purchased...
104.75, how about that?
Fine, that's fine. And then, and then I, then we would need to add the language of doling those out, one a quarter for how many ever years that would take.
So some language, jotting down, you know, Rob and I were chatting, too, some options could be, you know, with a length, with a phrase, "For distribution over a period of X number of years," or something broader, "For distribution consistent with the village's pending comprehensive plan amendment."
How about that one, the comp plan?
You can put it in there.
Because this could all change the next time, doesn't it?
But I think, I think you're messaging to the next council, even though this is a resolution that's going to the county commission, that we're messaging to the next council, "Hey, you know, we gave you some tools to work here, stretch it out."
So what, I mean, fine, 100.4 or whatever, and...
I said 100, I don't care, whatever you want, I just, let's make 0.75. I don't like having that...
100.75 with the language of distributing these after the comp plan is finished, one per, one per quarter for the next...
10 years.
Well, that, that means there's more years.
No, like, four times...
If we did 50, that would give us 12 and a half years.
So over the next 24 years?
If we did four a year, and we had 50 to give out, it's 12 and a half years.
I thought you said 100 and a quarter, Sharon.
I did at first, but I lowered my expectations.
Okay. Everyone is fine with that. I mean, this could all be changed, but how's that?
The state can drive, fly over with Santa Claus and throw permits off the sleigh and...
Yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Anything can happen.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, the number would be 104.75, and will include the directive language that...
For distribution over a period of 12 and a half years, was that the...
Yes.
Mark, why are you doing 4.75? Why don't you just say 105? I mean, what's the...
Because we have that odd one left over.
This would round it up to 105, because we have, we have 0.25 in our bank because of a settlement with...
Trying to balance the cash register.
And the message that we're sending with this, that every lot can be built on, that is the message, just to be clear. Every lot that we have can be built on with a market rate. I mean, that's essentially what we're saying, and so that message that this council is saying is that we do not value affordable housing or workforce housing.
I would point out that we could aggregate more than one unit on a portable housing project, 16 on an acre, or something like that. And that would still keep a lot of vacant land available. We, you know, we have the Machado lots up there.
Then add that into the language in some way.
I don't know quite how to do that, and if, even if we do, the next group can come in and...
Change it.
Race it all out, and, you know, so that, if we get too aggressive with that, we're inviting whatever. I mean...
I would argue that, because as long as we're messaging, then message what you want to message, which is stack them up on one lot so that we have some vacancy left? I mean, why not? If you really, if that's what you're really trying to say, unless you're trying to say something else...
I told you what I would really like to do, but that's impossible.
That's not an option.
So I don't, I don't want to hamstring the next group that comes in. I don't want to frustrate and hamstring the planners that come in, and I want to provide for flexibility for things that we don't know about.
You know, and this is the last thing I want to say. I know, but I'm going to, I'm going to really try. It's true. Not for the whole night, but the reason that adding more language to that than less is that you have been sitting here, and this whole council has been sitting here for two years, and the next council, who's going to have to deal with this immediately, will need the direction of the expertise of us, of this panel. So yes, more language than not, yeah, absolutely. And they can change it anyway, but they at least have the intention.
You know, they, if they win, they're entitled to that, you know? That's how it works. That's our system. I appreciate your sentiment there.
I appreciate yours.
Thank you.
So did you make a motion, Mark?
Did I?
Yeah, there was a motion to, I'll restate it, a motion to approve with the amendment of changing the number to, from 250 to 104.7 BPAS allocations, with the addition of the language "for distribution of a period over 12 and a half years."
That's it, that's my motion.
All right.
And I'll second it.
All right, so...
Oh, yeah, did we have public comment?
We already had public comment, didn't we? Yeah. Hey, Van?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Please.
Oh, come on.
Okay. No, we had public comment already, they had to sign up.
Let's just move.
Mr. Quick, are we in line? We already did public comment, correct?
Yeah, we're in compliance with the law.
Okay, all right. You wanted it after Jennifer spoke, Jennifer discussed, we did it after that, so, okay, so Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
The motion passes 4 to 1.
Because I didn't know if I wanted to vote on it like that.
Well done, next tab.
All right, so, John, tab, what is it, C?
Yeah, C and D are quasi-judicial. So it's going to require everybody to be sworn in, they are companions. Usually, we, you know, in the past, we have taken them together as long as there's no objection by council or the applicant's agent. Is there any objection to taking C and D together?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right, so we are into quasi-judicial, these are tabs C and D. Please be advised that the following agenda items are quasi-judicial in nature. If you wish to comment on these items, please inform the village clerk by filling out the available signup form. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. As a reminder, testimony in quasi-judicial items must be in person, Zoom testimony is not permitted. These proceedings will be handled in accordance with the village code requirements. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony shall be disregarded. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record, along with the village code and comprehensive plan. Any correspondence that was received by the village staff is included in the file and part of the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details on the quasi-judicial procedures in Section 30-256 of the village code may be obtained from the village clerk. As mentioned tonight, there are two quasi-judicial items, they are tabs C and D. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who intends to speak on the quasi-judicial items to please raise your hand to be sworn in by the clerk if you intend to speak on tab C or D.
In the matter in which you are about to give testimony, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Witnesses have been sworn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the both ordinance titles. Tab C is an ordinance of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Ty Harris, PA, Agent for Sojourn South LLC, to amend the village's future land use map from conservation to mixed use for the subject property located on Lower Mata Combi Key with real estate number 00394480-000108, as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce, providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Tab D is, is an ordinance of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Ty Harris, PA, Agent for Sojourn South LLC, to amend the official zoning map from conservation to commercial fishing for the subject property located on Lower Mata Combi Key with real estate number 00394480-000108, as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce, providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was reading off of the script. Jennifer pointed out that tab C has, sorry, I was reading off of the script. Jennifer pointed out that tab C has some additional language, so I apologize. Let me reread that so that it's...
Tab C, you said?
Yeah, and let me reread that so there's no issues. Tab C, an ordinance of Alamoata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Ty Harris, PA, Agent for Sojourn South LLC, to amend the village's future land use map from conservation to mixed use for the subject property located on Lower Mata Combi Key with real estate number 00394480-000108, and to establish a new subarea policy under Objective 1-2.1, as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce, and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. I apologize for that. Counsel, before we begin, I'd like you to please disclose any ex parte communications that you may have had with the applicant or anyone else. Again, these are for tabs C and D, and please include whether the person represented a group or entity, as well as the subject matter, as you recall. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see...
We got to do the ex parte disclosures.
We got to do ex parte, yeah. We got to wait for Mark and Elizabeth to come back.
Elizabeth and Mark, get out here. Come on. You have to say if you've talked to somebody. No, did you talk to somebody?
No.
Okay. Boy, do I got to run everything around here? I'm telling you. Mark, did you talk to anybody about this? Okay. I haven't talked to anyone since the first time.
I haven't talked to anybody since the first time either. I mean, I talked to Ty, Ty the first time. Hi, Ty. Henry?
I have not talked to anybody, I intend to talk to anybody.
All right, we're ready to proceed.
Okay.
Counsel, this is Jennifer DeBobri, employing director for the village of Alamoata. Here tonight for you for the second reading for the ordinance amending the flum and the zoning for the Sojourn South LLC parcels. The change for the future land use map or flum would be from conservation to mixed use, and for the zoning map amendment, it would be from conservation to commercial fishing district. As you may recall, this was before you, back in, I believe it was June, let me scroll to my paper, yep. It was back before you, in June 13th, for first reading. The council passed it at that time, as well as creating a subarea which would limit the property to the permitted uses in the commercial fishing district, as well as docking facilities exclusive of all other uses allowed in the mixed-use flum. On August 20th, 2024, the Department of Commerce issued a comment letter recommending that the village directly incorporate the allowed uses into the plan. I have made that attachment into your, into the resolution, so in your packet, if you're looking at the resolution, it's the fourth whereas, where it says, "Whereas a local planning agency and village council desire to also create a new policy 1-2.11.6, Lower Mata Combi Mixed Use Area 1. The future land use map designation on the subject property shall be LMMA UA 1 and be limited to the following uses. One, docking, loading, and unloading of commercial fishing vessels. Two, manufacture, assembly, repair, maintenance, and storage of commercial fishing traps and nets. Three, uses and structures accessory to commercial fishing such as bait fish tanks. And four, docking facilities for commercial fishing. All other uses allowed in mixed-use flum will be specifically excluded." So based on that change and the approval at first reading of the council, staff recommends adoption at second reading. I'm not going to go through the entire analysis, but if you have any questions after that, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Okay.
Good evening, Ty Harris, again, 110 Plantation Shores Drive. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Sojourn South. You've got the staff report, we've gone over this ad nauseam. My client said from the beginning that they were only interested in doing commercial fishing. We accepted the subarea policy, the Department of Commerce has also accepted that, it's in the revised resolution, and with that, we would respectfully ask you to approve it on second reading, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, so, we're going to open testimony for those in favor. Are you in favor? Okay, go ahead.
I was here for the first reading, and I've been here all the way through this situation. My name is Van Kadenhead, and I've always been a proponent of commercial fishing and having accessible waterfront for commercial fishermen, and access to the property immediately adjacent for their trap storage and historical, traditional uses that have gone on this property. My only qualm during the first discussion was the fact that it was, it seemed to me like with the mixed-use designation, there was a possibility of having the elephant stick his nose into the tent, and then later on, the entire elephant came into the tent. But it seems like the changes have been made that are acceptable, that they have been limited by the subarea agreement, that those things cannot happen, and they have been restricted to commercial fishing only, and things directly related to commercial fishing. There won't be any tiki bar built there, there won't be any tackle shop built there, there won't be, you know, I mean, live bait tanks is to do with commercial fishing, so that's acceptable. So I would urge you to go ahead and pass this, and I would thank you for being very thorough in the discussion leading up to this, and to the planning department for making those subarea changes to what was discussed in the first reading. So thank you very much.
All right, next, we have anybody else who's in favor? All right, with that being said, we'll close that, then those who oppose.
Sue Miller, Lower Mata Combi. I love commercial fishing. It's a non-conforming use now, and I believe it should stay a non-conforming use, and the areas where this is located is the most susceptible area in the village for damage during a storm, and it's right across from Sea Beach. There's so, so many issues with that particular location. This area was not included in the lawsuit that went with the other, the adjoining sojourn property, so they were satisfied with what was there at the time. They didn't ask for anything to be changed then, and I think we should leave it right the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Briefly, the reason that we went for the change was, can't do docks. That would be the expansion of a legal, non-conforming use, which is not allowed under the code, and to protect that shoreline that we've all seen get blown out with, you know, hurricane holes over the years, and protect that mangrove fringe, and to actually make a little money on the property with docks, we had to change this to commercial fishing so that we could protect the existing use and protect the shoreline. And that's the reason we're doing it, and there's no other reason, which is why it's restricted to just commercial fishing. Thank you.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Mr. Harris? No? Okay, all right. So do I hear a motion?
And this would be on tab C, we'll take them second.
I'll move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please? We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
No.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
The motion passes 3 to 2.
All right, tab D.
I'll move for approval.
Oh, we don't have to, okay, I thought you had to...
Do I do them separate?
Yeah, we do them separate, so, yeah, a motion to approve, tab D will be appropriate.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, Marnie, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
No.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes 3 to 2.
Okay, so, Henry, I'm going to request, if nobody else has anything else, request for motion for adjournment. for motion for adjournment. No? You got something? Okay.
Yes, I would love to say, I did say I wasn't going to say anything else, but I lied about that, so give me 30 seconds. I want to just close. I have thoroughly enjoyed almost, almost every minute of being here. I want to thank Rob, John, Jennifer, Marnie, staff. I know we have not always seen eye to eye, but I have certainly appreciated your patience, and I wish you all the best of luck, and thank you very much. I want to just highlight some things that this council did because I think that we should be pleased with our work. We welcomed a new manager. We initiated a comprehensive plan action. How exciting. We initiated a strategic master plan for the park. We hired a resiliency coordinator. Very, very exciting. We, I think, were the group that initiated the building moratorium, and I know that was difficult for this community. And we gave direction to withhold early out affordable allocations in order to actually put some muscle behind the idea that we believe in workforce housing. So, thank you very much for working together, and I've certainly appreciated my time here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah.
I appreciate that, too. I also have enjoyed working with all of you, and I have come to respect you more than you'll know, and I feel great sense of comfort that I'll be leaving here and the village will be in excellent, good hands. Is that a good way to say that? Excellent hands for the next group that comes behind us and for the benefit of the public. And I was reflecting on this earlier, and, you know, I started in this round of service in the year 2000, and we went through three managers and three temporary managers. We had two attorneys, three planning directors, two clerks, two finance directors, a new resiliency officer. I'm sure I'm forgetting more, but those were some hard things to go through, but look where we landed, and it couldn't be better. So I'm really proud to have been a part of that, and I think we left the place. I feel like I was a Boy Scout for a while. I feel like I'm leaving the place in a better condition than when I found it, and so I have some pride with that. And to the council, you know, we had some tough times, and we fought like cats and dogs, and I didn't think it was going to come back, but I'm so grateful that we proved the skeptics wrong, and we reached some low moments, but it's just proof that you don't have to stay there. And we accomplished a lot. I learned from you all. I appreciate every conversation we had, good or bad. Some of it was fun, some of it wasn't, but overall, overall, I think the people got their money's worth out of us, and I think the future for Isla Marada is bright. And I was very proud of what we just did a few minutes ago by setting the tone for the future and giving hope and giving opportunity for success for the next group that comes by. So, I'll look forward to seeing you around the hood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thank you. Well, this is the last time I shall have the honor to address you as your councilperson and your elected representative of this community. Of course, as you know, this role has been brought many highs and many lows. At my advanced age, I will not likely live to see the results of many of the decisions made on council during my terms. However, I did the best of my ability and made so much decisions that I am proud of and believe to be correct. As I stand down to make way for other candidates who want to make a positive impact on the direction of our community, I have some important advice to offer. This includes some benefits and some drawbacks. The benefits include the people who walk up to you in the grocery stores, in a hardware store, rotary luncheons, Chamber of Commerce luncheons, and church. To thank you for how you voted on something that makes their lives better. The drawbacks are the people that do call you 24/7 to complain about things. There are other people who go gunning for you, your opinions, and your reputations. These are things I did not expect and did not deserve, but I'm giving you the heads-up tip on this because it will happen. So as I bow out of this town council seat, please know I am not going anywhere. I will continue to play an active role in decisions that shape our beautiful community. God bless you. God bless the United States of America. And with that, I bid you adieu. Thank you.
I'd like to say something if I can. Now, look at me, I'm getting emotional. I don't know why. The staff, you guys have become to be my friends, and I'd like, you guys are like family to me. I'm thankful for Elizabeth, who was the first two females in a while to sit on council, and I appreciate the fact that we can be friends and not agree. Mark, I've learned a lot from you. You're extremely smart and knowledgeable, but I've also learned that there's an answer around every corner, and we all have the ability to find it. Buddy, you're like, I've known you my whole life, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you again. And Henry, looking at you is like looking at my dad. The memories, thank you. I'll miss you.
No, not yet. I have to, I was thinking of a couple people that, when Henry's up there talking, I'm thinking of my dad. My dad was good friends with Henry. And Earl Griffin is another one that was very good friends. Earl Griffin lives right there north of the, what used to be the bowling alley. Now it's a Publix there, and it's where Clay has the party thing there, whatever, that he sets up. But Earl and Sue Griffin, and Sue worked for Mr. Jaycocks at the Trading Post. And so anyways, and I remember when Henry had the, well, when LB had the cannery, and then Henry ended up buying the cannery and the turtle, actually. But anyways, I remember going over there every now and then and meeting with Henry in his back office, okay? And Henry was, you know, everybody knew Henry. So anyways, Henry, it is, it's been, you know, four years. We've, we've agreed, we've disagreed, but, you know, we did some good stuff, like the bridge.
Yes.
Okay? So anyways, and Mark, you know, I've known Mark for quite a while, known Linda for a long time. You know, we did a lot of good things here, okay? Do we always agree? No, but it's okay that we can agree, that we can disagree. And Elizabeth, the same with you. You know, we might have had our moments, but we come together. We actually came together on certain things, and, you know, like you with environment and stuff, I'm right there with you. Mark is actually, you know, big on the environment now, too, Sharon. But anyways, I just want to say thank you because, you know, we might have been on different ends of the spectrum, but we had to come together on a lot of things that we worked together on. And then Sharon, Sharon is Sharon, and she's, you know, we have known each other a long time, and, you know, it's been a pleasure serving with all you guys, with each and every one of you and our staff, Mr. Cole, you know, our law firm, all our staff. We've seen a lot of staff come and go, Mark, since we've got on in 2020.
I know some, some people may think of us and remember us for our differences, but it's important to remember that diversity is a strength and it's not a liability, and I think we leverage that to the max here, and I'm proud of it.
Well, Mark.
Not the fighting, but the result.
You and I have a lot in common, like the wildlife quarter, okay? The things Mr. Arnie Bellini with Liv Wiley is doing, and the millions of dollars that that man has spent in conservation and protecting the wildlife in the state of Florida, and he continues to do, you know, and, you know, the mitigation stuff, I'm very interested in that. I've looked at that stuff for a long time, the conservation and the mitigation stuff that, so anyways.
That's coming through in this council, and I'll try not to talk too much, but I have a little bit longer view back on the council back to 2000, and I can say with absolute accuracy and confidence that the pendulum has swung in the village from, in the old days, it was just build, 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 and now people are thinking more about the environment, not just because of climate change, but because of quality of life, and it's the key to our economy here. And we don't protect it, we're going to lose that, we're going to lose our livelihoods. So I'm really glad to have been a part of that swing of the pendulum, that awareness, the consciousness. I hope it continues and improves, and we'll only get better if it does, so.
Well, and I have to confess to Elizabeth and you, because you came back from that climate summit thing and, you know, wanted a resiliency officer, and I'm saying, God, do we really need a resilient? Why don't we work with the county, with Rhonda Hagg, whatever, you know? And anyways, Elizabeth, I have to say, I was very proud of Alyssa, okay? And she is very enthusiastic. I think it was a great hire that Jennifer found in that young lady, and there's a lot of creativity. So I have to say thank you because, see, you saw, I didn't really want it, but I went along with it, and so I think that was a really good thing there. And I know you, you guys, you went to that, and I didn't understand it. I didn't, I didn't like some of it, you know, but anyways.
Can we let Henry say it one last time?
Yes. Henry, you want to call a motion?
I move to adjourn.
All right.
Done.
We are adjourned.